Uh, Leaper here, Oakley?
Here.
Centola, Guerrero, here. Stahl?
Here.
Staub?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
And can Mr. Field read us the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have eight visitors that want to address.
They didn't have anybody call, so.
And then about the consent agenda, are there any questions?
Yes, we've got our mowers and they're working well. We haven't hung out yet, so.
Just no bill yet, correct?
No, no bill yet.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. All right, anybody have any questions, comments on the consent agenda? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Comment.
Motion made by Mike Stahl, second. Leonard Williams, call Oakley's.
Uh, Oakley?
Yes.
Guerrero? Yes. Stahl?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Leaper? Yes.
Okay, and old business.
Um, you got super tax report first?
I'm sorry, I skipped it. Time to.
We can go back. Um, the only thing I wanted to talk about a little bit about, and I'm also gonna give Mr. Field and Mr. Trigg an opportunity to talk a little bit. Um, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on some of our projects that are going on this, uh, this summer. Uh, the library is coming along nicely. They're supposed to be back out tomorrow to finish the carpet. Um, Dave Campbell has started painting in, in there already and, uh, it's starting to take shape. Um, we're also working on the new boardroom slash conference room over here on the other side of the building. That should be ready hopefully by our next board meeting. I met with, um, Chet Walker, not Chad Walker. It's a Chad. From, uh, foreign America anyway. Chet, it is Chet, I know that. I just kept going like on his last name for some reason, but, uh, I met with Chet and we walked around the, uh, the middle school and the elementary and, um, things are going well over there. They should have, uh, the new tile put in the restrooms in the, uh, elementary building by the start of school. The chorus room will be completed by the start of, of school and then, um, they're also gonna put carpet in Ms. Kluge's room, uh, and Ms. Hexel's room. I don't know what room numbers of those are, but whatever room they're working on that Christy Foles is in, um, that will get new carpet as well, so, um, they're moving along pretty well. Um, I think the buildings, at least the high school, has, um, I think run as smoothly as, as since I've been here. Um, work's getting done and, uh, they're doing, doing a good job, so that's kinda all I have to report. Um, I, I do have something that, I talked to Mr. Fowler about this. Um, the bid for that room that they're working on, Ms. Hexel's room, that was approved, um, for our summer maintenance. Um, the bids for that had to go into, um, our architect and the only person that sent a bid was Christy Foles and it is for a sum of $29,033. And, um, he said we probably ought to go ahead and put that under old business and let you guys go ahead and approve that. That's what he recommended to do, so that's kinda what I have to do. I will talk to you about, um, we probably need to discuss at some point, uh, the Sentinel is back up, um, to renew. We figured out today, I think the cost is gonna be somewhere around 9,800 to $10,000. Uh, I think we've always kind of felt like, at least the administrators, it felt like that's a good thing to keep going and continue to use. Uh, helps them save paper from putting out newsletters and just seems to me like there's always something from the school in there and it's pretty positive, um, PR, I think, to, to have that, so, um, that's something that I will have on. Uh, new business to vote on at the next meeting, but you guys can think about it and decide what you'd like to do.
Can you give me that total again, I'm sorry?
Um, it's gonna be, we estimated between 9,800 and, uh, $10,000. Which is typically what it runs. They're quoting us 1850 per subscription. So you guys still think that's the right thing to do, all of it?
Yeah, I know we had questioned earlier, um, when this discussion came up last year. For example, at our school, we're getting three or four copies, you know, one for the office, one for the lounge, one for the library, so maybe those are some things that we could look at to make sure that we're not giving extra copies to, you know, we just need one copy really in our school. And I don't know if it, you know, what happens.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that we get, do we get multiple copies? I mean, we get one for you and one for us, I don't know.
We got, we were getting three for the elementary school, just the elementary school.
I think they send it out to all the students and all the employees, that's probably why you're getting.
Yeah, well, I get one at home at spring.
Yeah, I get one at home as well, so.
But they're sending three, three for our building.
So maybe those could just be things, I mean, I know that doesn't take a lot.
Reduce it one, building and then one per employee.
So do you, the, how do they get the subscription names? You submit names to them? I mean, is there any way, do you need to look the list over?
I can meet with Carol on that, she's the one that usually provides the names, so I'll check with that.
There might be some you could clean up.
Maybe somebody like doesn't work here anymore and still gets it.
Students with multiple, I assume we're condensing those. If you have six students, you're not getting six papers.
Yeah, so, I don't think so, but we can definitely check. Uh, another, another thing that I wanted to quickly talk about and I didn't, uh, I'm not sure how you guys wanna approach this. In the past, we have purchased to kinda keep our technology up. We've worked with Q and S and we've taken out, uh, multiple year interest-free kind of loans and we pay it off, we pay a little bit off yearly. Um, right now, we're still paying off fiscal year fourteen, um, which will be paid off in August. Um, fiscal year fifteen, which would have been this past school year's purchase, we're gonna pay that off next July. They want us to, they're recommending that we purchase, uh, ninety more, um, flat screen monitors, uh, to update our labs at the middle school and at Harris Town. Um, I kinda wouldn't mind holding off on that and maybe replace them as they go bad. Uh, I hate to fix something that's not broken.
Well, that sounds like a good idea to me.
Um, we're still going to have, um, about $3,400 in, uh, server warranty that I think would be a good idea to do. Uh, that will cover them for the next two years and I think if we get through this school year with not adding anything, we'll have everything paid off next year and then we can look and see what they're recommending to upgrade. I know the servers, probably a server in each building, they're gonna look to, I think when the warranty runs out this time, we probably oughta look to, to update those and they're, they're pretty expensive, so.
I'd like to see too when the contract is due. I know there, we have a maintenance contract with them. I think we can purchase anything from any computer place outside of that maintenance contract, but when the maintenance contract comes up, I'd like to at least put it out in the public and let, I know Decatur Computers didn't get an opportunity last time, that kinda thing. I don't recall timeline and if it's coming due, but just like to.
I'll check on that.
Yeah. Have the opportunity for them to at least have something to compare cost against.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Since I knew, um, the things that you're paying off from two years ago in this year, those were upgrades on equipment?
Yes, they were, um, I believe just the, uh, the CPUs that we went throughout the buildings and replaced. We've updated, I think, basically every computer in the district over the course of the last two years.
Kind of been doing a rotating schedule, like so many per year?
Right.
Per building, or?
Okay, well, then I was just thinking, so how much, if you did those ninety monitors, are you talking the same, in same ballpark money-wise as you've been budgeting this year?
Yeah, it was roughly, it was roughly, um, nine thousand and, um, like I said, I just felt like that was.
Yeah. My only thought was if, if we don't do anything this year and then you say the server warranties are out.
We'll have two years for those.
Oh, I thought they were the next, after.
We would have two more school years after we renew those. Those are, those are due now. Uh, we'll get two more years of warranty if something happens, Q and S will fix them and they'll charge.
And that's servers only?
Yes. And then they're also putting a backup battery. We're having an issue here and I don't know if it's the building or if it's the village, but we're having brownouts. And it seems like it's happening a lot on the weekends and, um, I think that's what has been damaging our Promethean boards.
Probably, I mean, that's, that's worse than, brownouts, well, worst with power surge a lot.
And they can track those, Q and S can track those through the servers when they shut off and reboot and we're gonna put a, a backup battery, which is also kinda like just a huge surge protector. Uh, we're gonna put that on the, the server here at the high school. Um, we've also put, um, surge protectors on all the Promethean boards now and see if that maybe will help them from, because what's happening with the Promethean boards, you think that a light bulb pops and you go to replace the light bulb and nothing happens. And, um, of course, they're just out of warranty too, so they charge, uh, about $600 for a, a projector. So without the projector, the Promethean boards pretty much. Yeah. So, I think, I guess we'll see what happens with that. One salesperson told me that they've been having problems with this particular projector, um, and he no longer works for Promethean. Uh, and the next person I talked to said, "Oh, no, we have not had any problems with any, with that with anybody, nobody's gonna tell us anything." So, he might have spilled the beans and they probably let him go, so, but we have to fix them and hopefully the surge protectors will, will help. And then, of course, we have, um, all of our software updates that we do every year, which is right around $3,000. We'll have that on, um, uh, bills to pay next, next month as well. Just kinda heads up what's coming from Q and S, but I, I just don't think we need to spend, we need to replace those right now, the monitors.
Are they still offering zero percent interest on the loan?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be better just to break it up in two parts, do the middle school now and then do the elementary school in two years? That way you don't have the $9,000 ones?
We could do that if, if that's what you guys wanna do, certainly.
For the monitors now, are you getting, uh, I mean, they're light, they're bright, they're not, there's not a problem?
Well, they're the big.
They're the big ones.
They're the monsters.
Oh, the deep ones, they're not flat screens?
No.
How big are the flat screens?
They are, um, the new ones that are coming out, I think, were seventeen inch diagonal.
Is there cost savings, order?
In bulk?
Yeah. I don't believe so, I could double check with him on that as well, but, um, if you wanna do a lab this year and do one next year, I mean, that's, that would be okay too, whatever you guys think.
I guess it would be good to see if, you know, if we order forty-five or whatever it is, if there's, as opposed to ordering one if it breaks, you know, is it gonna be forty dollars cheaper to get them in bulk or if it's, you know, zero cost savings at all, then maybe it doesn't make a difference, you replace them as they go?
I don't, I don't believe that, well, I mean, that's what we've been doing and it seems to me like that the price is the same regardless of.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that 'cause I've never, I've never purchased them in bulk. I know, gosh, I'm trying to remember how many, John, do you remember how many we replaced like last year in the computer labs or, I mean, I know at one time we had two or three that were on the fritz and I think we ended up having to, to, you know, we got something similar to what we had in there brought in, you know, to, to take its place, but, um, you know, I mean, I, I think for the most part, they, they were, you know, for now.
Well, and we're at the advantage where we've got between twenty and twenty-two computers, so when you've got smaller flash sizes, if a monitor's not working, we can just rotate kids around that monitor until, and then he usually finds one somewhere.
We're, we're replacing eight in the, the library with, uh, with the grant that we received. So that will be, um, eight flat screen monitors. I think they're fourteen inch, but they're still flat screen and, um, so we could have those on reserve as backup as stuff starts to, if we're losing them at a, a rapid rate and we can switch out with, uh, the ones we have on reserve and, so, there's a lot of different options, I guess, we could do. It's kind of up to you guys what you, what you'd like to do.
We can't take action this month, it would be next month, right? Cause it wasn't on the agenda.
Correct. But if we let him know that this is what we're wanting to do, he could have everything basically ready to go.
Right.
So just.
Go back to two or three options.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind because I hate, you don't wanna get behind on technology and I hate when something breaks and then you're waiting to replace it, something of that short, so, and, and Mike's got a good idea, maybe we don't do all ninety at one time.
Okay. Well, I will, um, I'll price it per, uh, each lab and I'll also talk to him if there's any cost saves at all, not to, you know, if we just replace them as they go out.
And if we're, if we do two labs at once, is there more cost saving in doing that way?
Yeah.
I'm always looking for the tail, just in case. You never know. And then we can put that down as old business to consider for next time, for, for approval? Okay. And as far as superintendent's report, do you have more?
Um, the only other, uh, was the, uh, motion to purchase the, the camcorder for the purpose of video recording the board meetings. We can, we can do that, we can have our own camera. Uh, Mr. Greck, he said he would come and do it and, uh, he would put it on the website for us.
I would make a motion to do that, it's a good idea.
Okay, so Leonard made the motion to purchase a new Canon digital camcorder for the purpose of video recording board meetings. Anyone want a second?
A second.
Second if my mic stung.
Can I, can I ask a question first? Uh, with the meetings being taped and posted to the website, when will they be posted? After they are approved, at the following meeting, the day, the next day?
Typically, as, I would think, as soon as he can get them done and put on the thing.
It could be, then it could be this evening, if you, the evening of the board meeting if you wanted, or you could wait.
A lot quicker than they are now.
It's up to, yeah, it's up to you guys.
That's up to.
Well, it'll be our, it'll be our record, it'll be the board's official video line.
And then the plan is to, once that meeting is over, you can then catalog them somewhere off of our website so it doesn't drag it down and either?
Right. Well, it would be, if I uploaded it, it wouldn't be directly under our website, it'd be on YouTube and then it would be embedded on the website.
Oh, okay.
So there, there wouldn't be any, we're not, we're not paying for our website anyway, but there wouldn't be any server usage for the, for the website, it'd be all on YouTube.
Okay. All right. Um, and then, I guess, as far as cost associated with us doing it that way, it's only the camcorder then?
Yes.
And could it be used within the school for any other purpose? I mean?
Absolutely. I would use it with marching band if that's okay.
Okay.
Cause we do a lot of taping of the band from the press box and stuff and.
Okay.
Concerts and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay, great.
And Mr. Greck, he did some research and I think he found the one that he liked and obviously it wasn't a great deal of money, so.
Right. As long as it's multi-use, I think that's the way to go, that we can get all the bang for the buck out of it, so, um, and then I guess in the, in the event of a backup, that we need a backup for Mr. Greck, do we know where we're gonna go with that as far as just put it on a tripod and record or do you have someone to back you if you're on vacation or you're ill or you're whatever during a board meeting?
We really never thought that far ahead, but I'm sure that we could look at some.
Okay.
I think Mr. Britton could probably do it from his spot over there.
Okay. All right, so we had a first by Leonard and a second by Mike Stahl. Can you call Oakley's?
Guerrero?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Leaper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Centola?
Okay. And in that aspect, we travel into old business, I guess.
Uh, there's one more. Christy Foles again.
Well, I would, um, I guess we probably, do you guys wanna just talk briefly about, because I was gonna do that under the super tax report since we didn't have a, a special spot. I wanted, um, Jonathan to talk about the math and science and, uh, and then have Cody talk about the smart boards and the possible need for some aids at the, uh, over at, um, Second Valley West.
Okay.
Um, we had looked at, we'd met as a, at the district curriculum committee, had met a few times here, uh, right at the last half of the year and we're kinda talking over some things and looking at schedules and things like that and we've been kinda reviewing, um, several different things more intently over about, over the last year. Um, looking at math curriculums and, and things right now in terms of being in line with the, with the standards and whatnot. We've kinda had a standstill in terms of a lot of materials and things that we could get and resources out there that just were not completely aligned or not caught up with how everything was progressing in terms of the standards. Um, so we've been kinda looking and pulling and, and getting a lot of samples of different things to look at. Uh, and we'd organized, um, right after the new year, started organizing a curriculum committee of teachers, um, specifically elementary teachers and administrators and looking at some different things and I pulled in a lot of different samples, um, talked to some other school districts in terms of what they were doing, did a lot of research and we're looking at some things. And something that we kinda came to consensus on in terms of what the teachers and administrators were talking about reviewing the, the actual resources, um, just at the beginning of summer, end of the year, was looking at a program called Go Math, um, which is a really supplemental resource, got a strong scope and sequence. Other schools and things that I've talked to that have used it have been pretty impressed with how it works. Um, there's a technological component with it, um, student journals, teacher resources, um, online resources that are all with, I mean, it's not to be all the end all, but one thing that we've noticed, you know, with everybody kinda having to piece together what they're doing is a real lack of consistency from, from grade to grade and even from teacher to teacher, um, in some cases. And looking at something to kinda skeleton around, I think would be very beneficial and there are, like I said, now some resources that are looking a lot better and are more aligned with what we need to be teaching, so that we're not throwing good money after bad. Um, and I went out and kinda looked at the option of piloting Go Math per year and letting the teachers actually get into it and use it and see what we feel like after that. It's a consumable material, so if we decided, hey, this just really wasn't right for us, you still got, uh, you know, some resources there that you can use to supplement in with what you're teaching if we decide to go in a different direction. And if we don't, then we've got something that's there that, it's really relatively cheap in terms of what a lot of things are. It's not, um, like I said, it's, it's a consumable book that they use, um, kinda like what the everyday math journals were. So that it's something you can purchase for the kids every year, but much cheaper and cost effective than buying a textbook that you might use six years, seven years, you know, topping. I mean, that can get trashed and then you gotta go out and buy more of those and those are way more expensive. So I went and I got some different proposals and stuff, uh, from Houghton Mifflin on that and it would be my recommendation and I know when I talked to the, to the rest of the committee and the teachers and stuff, that they felt like that was a good move to do for next year as well, um, just to try to get a little of that consistency back and get everybody really focused in on the same thing. So, we have those here. I think that grand total, when I looked at everything, and this is, would be including a, a training for the staff too, along with the journals and the teacher's edition and stuff, um, would run us for, um, the east building and the west building to get everybody what they needed, um, around $13,000. And that would be K5 for teachers, students, everything that we would need and then also a, a full day training that we could get scheduled. That would really be, for us to be able to get that scheduled for a full day, we would really have to move very quickly on it to get the proposal back to them if that's the way we decide to go. And preferably really shoot probably for that first week that we would be coming back, that week of August tenth, if they can book that. If not, we'll have to look probably at one of our half-day dismissals and try to cram it all in in three or four hours, which would be, like I said, a full day would be much better to have time to use it, ask questions, um, but it's got a lot of really nice components to it from, from what we've looked at. And then, like I said, when we can meet as a, when we reorganize the full district curriculum committee, you know, presents the board and stuff and kinda what we're seeing, um, and then everybody make a decision if that's what we wanna ultimately, you know, stay the course with. But I don't think that we're going to totally know that without at least piloting and seeing, you know, where we're at.
And after the pilot program of this one year at 13,000, where do you see the, I mean, is that the cost each year?
No, it would not be, that would be, um, I would look at probably, see, student editions typically run, um, around $23 or so a piece, but again, too, after that initial adoption, we wouldn't be stuck with having to go to Houghton Mifflin either, we could go to Follett and Follett not only can provide you with, you know, gently used copies, um, but they have a price break and they're through Houghton Mifflin as well, but they typically cut you a little bit better deal. They, they won't until after that initial adoption, you know, but then, so if you've gotta, you know, get your student journals or whatever. And then we also sell back to Follett, so Follett gives us credit, um, on the stuff that we sell back to them, uh, so then we kinda cut costs with that too. So I, it would not be anywhere near where it would be this initial year, um, cause you got that training in there too, you know, and that's really, that's a big loan.
What are you selling back if you're using the journals?
Um, if we have old textbooks and stuff, that they, they'll take them if they have places that would still use that or would wanna use that, they'll rebind them sometimes. Uh, they'll come out and give us quotes, they'll say, "That's a dog, throw that away," you know, "This is something that maybe we can use." Um, and they give you a little bit back on it. It's a good way to kinda recycle what you have, you know, if you're not, you know, using the same thing anymore. They'll take samples too, so like, all the samples that we've been getting and the stuff that we decided that we don't wanna go with, they all, they've already shown interest and the guy came by and saw all the stacks of books that I had, you know, um, for the high school and, and middle school even that we're looking at. And that would be something that, you know, we're gonna continue looking at this year too for the upper levels to see what would align well with this. Um, I really feel like what we're looking at with the elementary, I think is gonna be a good curricular resource to, to utilize in the future and, and I think is really the best of what is out there. Um, and I, I like the scope and sequence, which you say, I, I think it's, it's really pretty, it's pretty nicely done and that's not been the case for the last several years. There's, there's been a lot of junk that they just slapped a sticker on it and said, "Oh, this is everything," and it's the same thing that you had before, you know, and, and not very useful. But, you know, the teachers are, are drowning trying to pull and gather things and, you know, it's, it's just, uh, it's a lot of prep work, what they're doing now. It would be nice to give them something that kind of aligns what they're doing, cause they don't have time to, for everybody to get together all the time and, and talk, you know, and, and everybody's been doing a great job with it, but we need something to kinda pull it together, I feel like, and, and get us going.
So in math at least, it'll keep both of our elementaries basically following the same guidelines all the way throughout the year?
Exactly, the same guidelines. And then we'll also, uh, with the way we've got the calendar this year, I know it's my plan to, to get everybody together on some of our half-days so that we can have professional development and, and do a gap analysis with our unit plan and say, "Okay, what are we, what are we missing here? What are we not hitting? What are we maybe not that need to spend as much time on? What are you guys seeing, you know, at the east building versus the west building?" Um, and I think that too is just gonna, it's gonna facilitate those days to be a lot better than just, "What are, what are you guys using totally for this?" You know, or, "What are you using for this? What do you find more?" You know, it'd be more like, "Well, how did this specific lesson that we were doing here work for you and how these activities, you know, facilitate what you were trying to do and the standards that you're trying to meet with that?" So, I think, like I said, again, I think everybody's done a phenomenal job in, in addressing it and stuff, but I think having something that, it just makes everything a little more consistent and tight would be really great to start implementing and then building off of that, um, in the middle school and high school as well, so, but that would be my recommendation on it and I think it'll save you a lot in the long run. Like I said, after initial adoption of this, if we decide to go year after year, they also have three and five-year plans and stuff that would even cut the cost down more, uh, based on what it is here. I didn't wanna go for a three-year, you know, or anything like that without being a little more into it than we are. We've looked at it, everybody seems to like it, but still just haven't, until you've gone through it, it's hard to really tell what all you're getting when you just, you're going out of these samples. Okay, I have a few sample chapters here and there and I really liked them, but maybe Okay, I have a few sample chapters here and there and I really liked them, but maybe it, you know, maybe it's lacking where we don't know, or it could just, it could be awesome, so. But I think it's very solid. I think it's a very solid move. Like I said, we've all looked and read tons of research and spoken to people who have actually implemented it in, you know, other programs as well and kind of compared and, you know, judged apples to apples and that would be the direction I'd go at this point.
Sounds like money was back to me.
Okay, is that something that we can?
We have typically purchased textbooks, series out of capital outlay, it's something that the board will not necessarily have to approve, so we could go ahead if, if you guys are okay with it, if you think that, if you think that's the direction we want to go, then we can purchase that and get moving on it.
Start the process and then make the final.
And I think the piloting of it is a really good idea because if you remember, some of you were on the board back when we jumped into the Chicago Math Series and we went, I believe it was, K eight right off the bat and then we moved it into the high school and I think we found that it wasn't the end-all math series that we thought it was going to be and so I think, I think piloting at the elementary level is a really good idea and we can see how it works there and then decide how we move forward.
Okay. Do we just, do we need to reconsider or can just be done on the capital outlay and move and move on?
I think we can be down at that, we can just move on. If you guys are in agreement that that's, that sounds like what we want to do, then I think that's fine.
Do you want to pull the table then?
I think as long as both schools are doing, you know, both ends are doing the same thing, I think that's what we've been striving for it and.
Martha?
I think it's excellent and to get, like you said, a skeleton in everybody's hands. I could not imagine going back to teach, trying to do what teachers have to do now. That is beyond me, but give me something to build off of and I'm going to be a happier teacher, so, instead of trying to create it all myself. So I think it's fabulous and if both buildings are unified, I think that's great.
I like the idea as well. I'd like to see in addition, maybe, you know, I feel like the teachers in Harrisdale have a little bit of a, you know, two teachers, co-teachers, you can shoot ideas off of each other. I'd like to see the Iliopolis teachers brought in a little bit more and have that communication, you said, and be able to share lesson plans if that be the case, or resources or whatever on a more regular basis, but I think we're headed in the right direction until we someday choose to hopefully put everybody in one big building.
The only thing I'm concerned with is the online part. Is that just going to be in-class or is that for use at home or?
Well, the, there would be online resources you could access at home, like you could access the, the stuff like, you know, out of the text at home if you, if you need to refresh a book, you know, or whatever.
But it's in the book as well?
Yeah. But the, the online component that I was specifically referring to would be an independent practice type thing and I haven't seen it, I know kind of of it, called Think Central that supports the lessons that the students are learning, so it's something that they would go into, kind of like the Success Maker or some of the things that they do in Waterford, it would kind of support the lessons that they're doing. So say the teacher takes them down to the lab one day and is maybe kind of going over some stuff, doing some one-on-one stuff with kids, doing small group guided math, things with kids to kind of remediate some deficits or help them figure out maybe where their step, you know, slipping up somewhere and the other kids can be kind of going at their own pace at their level on this Think Central program.
I was thinking that, you know, not every kid's going to have access to.
Yeah.
In their home, not any library or online outputs.
And that's been a problem, you know, that I've seen with a lot of these other programs and that we've noticed, like with some of the Pearson programs up, you know, some of the things that they're doing in the Springfield schools and Decatur schools, you've got to have a tablet sitting in front of you, you know, you've got to have an iPad or something and I said, you know, that's not, that's not, I mean, absolutely let's get technology in their hands and stuff and let's get them using technology, but you can't totally rely on that because like you said, not everybody's got it at home, you know, and that's just, you know, that's just a big part of it. And also, you're losing other skills when you're just on the computer all the time too. You know, we need to have that reading and, you know, writing time and that literacy component within our mathematics too that, you know, they need to write it down, you know, they need to be sitting there reading it, not watching the video to do it, you know, too. I mean, that's all good and it's a, you know, you've got multiple pathways and that's, that's great stuff, but yeah, absolutely, yeah. And that's like with the digits and some of these others, yeah, it's all, you've got to have the tablet at your desk or, and I talked to some friends that teach in Springfield and said, oh, if my, my iPads aren't working, oh man, I've really got to scramble and figure something out or if my Promethean board, smart board goes down, because it's all based on that and just that alone. So if you don't have that, you're up a creek, you know.
Okay.
That probably is a good idea.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay. You're good to go, okay? You guys are good to go. All right. And then from there, superintendent's report?
Cody, do you want to talk a little bit about what, what's going on with the smart boards and what we may have coming down the road as far as individual needs?
Yeah. And regards to the smart boards, the PTO is going to purchase two of them, one for Mrs. Hawkins's new kindergarten classroom because we're just going to leave the one that she got through grant-funded last year in her class for the incoming third-grade teacher, which by doing that, that completely, every class at West now has Promethean board. PTO is also buying one for the pre-K in Iliopolis and I've encouraged them to, next time they come with enough money, to buy one for the music room, just because the pre-K, no, really, it's three hours a day they utilize it. I'd like to see the music that can utilize at K through eight. One thing Mr. Meadows and I talked about is at some point going to the, the smart board brand, the set of Promethean. The school I was at previously, we used smart board and what you pay for, it's a good product, but it's also the support. No questions asked. If you need something covered, they'll, you know, they'll, they'll just send someone out. Now we're doing Promethean, it's, we'll call and say, hey, this is happening and they'll try to walk us through on the phone how to fix it. But the thing is, if you try to fix it, if you read the warranty, the fine print, it says it's null and void if anybody outside of them fixes it. So that was one thing we've looked into. Mr. Meadows and I both met with the smart board rep and the prices are similar, but the support is going to be that much greater, so if we ever decide to do that down the road, that might be a smart transition. Smart boards are a lot more user-friendly, the ones they've come up with now. They do have trainings. Promethean has kind of gone away from their trainings downstate. Most of their trainings are events up in Chicagoland area, which it's more of a, you've got to stay at a hotel and, you know, all that good stuff that plays into that and usually don't leave there without spending another four or five thousand dollars on new products and that you have to have, they say. But smart board is, they'll come to your building and set up the, the training. So my recommendation in the future is if we do start buying new boards and stuff for the district is go the smart board route, just because, you know, we called the guy on Thursday and he was here on Monday, walking through with Mr. Meadows and I and Promethean, I just, you know, I've dealt with four different people in nine months. As for the aides, the one thing we, I've been informed is we do have a couple of new students moving in that have individual aides and then that's on top of the aide that resigned for West, so we might have the possibility of having to look for a couple more individual aides, which we have to have via IEPs and that's just, we have to have that to be compliant with them.
Are they all middle schoolers or?
Uh, one is a fifth grader. He's moving in from 186. He had an individual aide at 186, so I'm waiting for his IEP to see how much we have to have, if it's individual or classroom. We do have one that I've heard is moving out of district, but until I see, you know, transfer papers, we have to have aide and that was the aide that resigned to go, to move to Tennessee. So we, we have to have these things in order to stay compliant with their IEPs, so we'll have to start. I would rather start the, the looking process sooner than later, so we're not scrambling until August fourteenth to make sure we're complying on the seventeenth for that.
But we may not know until after registration, so we would have to, we couldn't hire them until the board meeting in August anyway, so.
But I, I've, I've got a couple candidates that have stopped by and dropped stuff off in the office about, you know, wanting to sub and things like that and they're pretty, they've had some special ed background and so if it would be okay with you guys to start looking into that. But like Mr. Meadows said, until we know, one way or the other, they're through our doors. I do know the one new family just purchased a house in Iliopolis, so I do know that, it's for sure.
Okay. Are the boards that Iliopolis is buying, are they going with the smart boards? So you get some in your building to try them out?
No, they didn't, uh, I recommended the smart boards and they decided since they, everybody else had Promethean, to go Promethean, but I would.
Do we have any smart boards or all Promethean?
All Promethean.
I don't know what, sorry.
We have one smart board.
Yeah. When we first got those boards, Promethean, it was the exact opposite. They said the Promethean was so much better than the smart board. I remember that one, we had the test there in front at the board meeting, so what's changed?
I think what's changed is just the, the big part of it is you're dealing with ten different people on ten different things. When, all my experience, my eight years I had at a smart board at Peter's Purport is, I made a phone call or the technology, I made a phone call there, they're the next day fixing it. So if I, if it's techno, technological support, you deal with person A. If it's physical support, you deal with person B. If it's, and then they always come in and it's always, well, if you purchased this upgrade then, you know, it works a lot better.
You know what though, when we first started with Promethean, it wasn't that way.
Yeah.
We had Ron Nimner, Nimner, I believe his name was, that had eventually left Promethean and he took care of us, he really did. And if we had a problem, he was out there and.
They've gone, they really have.
There's been a lot of turnover too, just in, since we've been dealing with them in the last, I don't know, my two years, I mean, the person that replaced him, I think you said she was gone now.
She's gone. I dealt with three different people just in the last school year.
Now, I had always heard smart board was geared more towards the business end and then Promethean's more school, but we can do everything that we need to do within that smart board and get everything.
As I say.
All right.
Now I think we can move on.
Okay.
Out of that, out of superintendent's report.
All right. And we've done the old business and the videotaping, so we're going to move on to the motion for the middle school?
Yes, for the, Christie Foltz doing the work at the, the classroom in the middle school with a sum of twenty-nine thousand, thirty-three dollars and zero cents.
Okay. So we need a motion to award this project to Christie Foltz for the sum of twenty-nine, zero, thirty-three.
I'll move.
Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second? Second by Jeff Stahl, call please.
My pen just quit working, just a minute. Got it. And Jeff seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, we start with Jeff Stahl?
Yes.
Mike Staub?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Martha, yes. Michael?
Yes.
And Stephanie?
Yes. Okay. And then from there, into new business?
Okay, the first item that we have up there is Prairie Farms, we put the bids out, we opened those up this past Thursday. Prairie Farm, once again, the only dairy organization going and they were the only bid, so I'm going to recommend that we give the bid to Prairie Farms for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
Okay. So we need a motion to award a contract to Prairie Farms for dairy products during the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
How, how did your prices compare to last year?
You know, I don't, I don't have that information with me, but I can check. I thought I had the bids here with me and I'm not seeing them. I think they were Coles, which was our, which we're going to offer the bid to for the groceries, very similar to what they were last year with the pricing, same way with Prairie Farms, very comparative to what, what they provided us last year.
But there was an increase?
I really, I honestly don't know. I don't know where the bids are. If I have any stack of stuff here, I don't know. It might be on Carol's desk. Do you want me to go check and see real quick if I can find them?
No, I trust you.
I can give you, after executive session, I can go up and find them and I can give you the exact quotes.
I thought they were in here, but they're not in my stack of stuff.
But the Prairie Farms and the Coles should be up there on Carol's desk.
And it's the only price we got, right?
Right. It's the only thing we have going.
Okay. So a motion to award to Prairie Farms?
I'll move.
Okay. Anybody Jeff Stahl, a second? Mike Staub?
Okay. Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Centola Guerrero?
Yes.
Okay. Who'd I forget? Stahl. Because you have an M over you, you made the motion, I'm sorry. Yes, Stahl.
And we had bids from Coles and Cisco. Carol and I sat down and we went, we looked at the, the main items that we use a lot of, like the buns, the chicken nuggets, things that we use the most of and we, again, we compared apples to apples and Coles came in as the cheap.
Little bid?
Yes. And we truly did apples to apples. And, and again, Coles was the little bid, so I recommend that we award the grocery bid to Coles.
Okay. So a motion to award the grocery bid to Coles wholesale for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
I'll move.
Motion made by Leonard, there a second?
I'll second.
Martha Leeper, second? Call please.
Williams?
Yes.
Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Centola Guerrero?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Okay. And then?
The last item that we have here is that every year we have to enter an agreement with the regional office of education to provide alternative education for students for whatever purposes. Sometimes those are based on, in lieu of expulsion, sometimes it's just an administrative change that one of the principals recommend, but I'm going to recommend that we approve that agreement with the ROE and Stephanie has the paperwork that she has to sign off. We, we have to provide some sort of alternative education in most cases anymore, so.
Okay. So I don't have a motion for that, so I can just, we need a motion to approve and to renew our agreement with ROE to provide alternative education for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. Okay, anyone?
I will.
Okay, so moved by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll second.
Leonard Williams and can all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then at this point, ready to go into closed session, so I need a motion to enter into closed session for reasons stated on the agenda.
I'll move.
Made by Mike Staub, there a second? Jeff Stahl? Call please.
Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Centola Guerrero?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Centola.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Rachel McCormick as middle school aide. Michael Oakley, second. Mike Staub? Call please.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Centola Guerrero?
Yes. And I, if there's anything else, I need a motion to adjourn.
I got something.
Okay.
With all the work we're doing around the district this year, I was wondering if we could get some pictures up on the school website to show people, you know, the rooms the rooms being improved, where their tax dollars are going. You know, the new library, the room that we're getting ready to do over at the middle school, the bathroom tidling.
Maybe with a little synopsis of each. I kind of discussed, and I don't know if you were ever here during any of those, Mr. Grecky, but we had talked about some of the, the pub classes run does, pictures of so many different functions throughout the year, and I didn't know if there was a way for them to get, for them to get, you know, maybe once a month, just a little bit of information to you to update.
Yes.
What's your, will that work?
Yes, I, I ask for those pictures often.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, Mr. Field, you can put the heat on. All right, so, anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn? Made by Leonard Williams, second?
Here.
Mike Oakley? And, oops, call her please.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams? Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
Yes.
Centola Guerrero?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.